Okay, thanks for everybody for coming. This will be the Tuesday, October twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, four P M. Uh, Board of Directors in Tiburon, Sanitation Department meeting located at Tiburon Community Center. I either launch, uh, one Bob Cat, open Bob Cat, Bob White Circle, Tiburon, New Mexico, eight eight three by low. If you could have joined me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The salute to the flag of Mexico. My salute to the flag of Mexico.
Is the assemble, perfect friendship among our cultures.
Local. We have Director Jesse Duckett, Chairman Dave Cooley, Director Vice Chair, um, Ed Harcy, Director. Alan Burmeister. And attendance. Approval of agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will proceed. Uh, we don't have a manager's report. So we will forward the manager's report, treasurer's report, you're up, Mr. Duckett. Okay. I'll read off the account balances. Uh, on the F and S account, service account, uh, we have, uh, ten, ten thousand, twenty six dollars and thirty five cents. On the operations checking account, that's the account in the office to pay things, we have eighty two thousand, five hundred and one dollars and ninety cents. On the USD construction loan pass through account, we have seven hundred and eighty eight dollars and forty nine cents. On the USDA debt debt service account, we have four thousand, six hundred and forty two dollars and ninety seven cents. On the USDA short term asset replacement account. Uh, we have a hundred and sixty seven thousand, fifty four dollars and two cents. On the water restricted reserve account, we have fifty thousand, one hundred and two dollars and thirty seven cents. And the water standby account, we have three thousand, five hundred and fifty two dollars and eighty five cents. And, uh, things are moving sort of slow on the treasurer's side. Uh, I guess we're still going through security upgrades. Things are sort of. Hectic in the office and, uh, the books haven't really been redone like we wanted them to. We're having to sort of wait and go slow. And that's about it. Um, thank you very much. Any questions or numbers? Of course, once again, we're. We're putting a lot of money towards getting Rhodey Law Firm paid off. That's a cloud hanging over trying to get through that. It's down to what? What's our current?
It's about sixty thousand dollars.
We're down to three hundred and sixty thousand. We're doing pretty good on that. So. Uh, hopefully by the end of the year, we'll get this thing paid off. But it is, it is really hurting us right now as far as just having extra funds around. You know, it's done. Plus, we've done security upgrades, uh, in the office and we're probably. Well over ten thousand in security upgrade. That means all new computers, all new printers, all new interface, all new communication hubs, all new wiring, everything's built. And it's been done right this time. And we have an IT that can help us maintain that as going forward.
Would it mean? An idea to have a call in then maybe next meeting and try to tell everybody what he's been doing. It's my eyes gloss over when he starts talking about this stuff. I think I admire, he's hand built all these computers and he's put so many security features in him to make him pretty much bug proof.
Jessica can contest to how the new computer. Give us a synopsis.
Oh, my gosh, it's amazing to have computers that do everything you need them to do when you need them. Um, the security, I've never worked around security features like this. It's, it's very cool. It's instant. I got, you know, we had people in and out of the office prepping for the meeting today and I got alerts in my email. About things I didn't even know I could get alerts on, but it was so cool because I could walk right up to people and be like, I know you did this. It told me you did this. It's very cool. It's very cool.
The next stage of our security is cameras. The next stage are the current stage that we're working on right now with biometrics. Uh, we're going to put in biometrics time clocks that report directly to our computer. So our guys, when they come in, no more time cards, they will, something saying it will read it, send all that information directly to our computer. They do that two times a day, of course, once in the morning, once in the evening, so we know who's here and what's going on.
Is it gonna tell a history of your payments?
Online.
Like on my account? Do you have like a history of what's been paid?
We're changing over to a whole new billing system moving forward. So all the data that's current up until December, mid-December.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna be kind of wishy washy, let's say, when we get the new system online.
Yeah, I mean, of course, it's supposed to all transfer over and they do all that for us.
We're gonna archive the information so you can't come in and ask.
Yeah. Yeah, everything should just transfer right over. It may take some time and there might be some bugs, but they have the information. It should come over to the new system.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, will it, uh, when finally all gets settled out, we have a clear breakout of, I spent two hours on FNS today with the greater blah, blah, blah. Will it track all that?
We're coming up with a system to keep track of FNS. And that's gonna be a physical sheet that the guys will have that goes to her so she knows how to divide up their time. So we do need, we do need to have knowledge of what the guys are doing, but we want to make sure the guys are here and they're actually present. Because there's nothing right now to keep somebody from saying, I was here and I wasn't here, or get in at noon and say, I was here at eight o'clock. Not to say that we have a lot of that going on, but this just kind of keeps everybody honest. And that will be here at the lodge. The biometrics will be located here at the lodge. Okay, moving on. Old business, discuss approved minutes from October eighth, regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October eighth regular meeting without changes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number two, discuss approved minutes of October twelve special meeting. Any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October twelve special meeting without changes.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three, discuss approved, disapproved, the Kilgore easement over TWSD property on Tolda Pines in El Dorado that we tabled on August twenty seventh. Gentleman's trying to get power to his property and the discussion is that we want him to go overhead with his power, not underground. And I think that's the only situation to come up with at this time. So if we can go ahead and have a motion to approve that via an overhead easement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we. Approve the Kilgore easement over TWSD property at Tolda Pines in El Dorado. And it's my understanding that all the, the Terro County electric is waiting on is. Something from us saying, yeah, we don't care going ahead.
Yeah, correct. Uh, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We can get ahold of him if we would, Jessica, and tell him that it's approved. Uh, the only situation is that we wanted to go overhead. And they will have a form that comes to us that I will have to sign. To get it approved and he needs to get that to us here in the office. New business, moving on. Discuss approved twenty standby liens in amount of five thousand, six hundred and thirty seven dollars. Cost to file these liens will be five hundred dollars. We need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the twenty standby liens in the amount of five thousand, seven thirty seven dollars with the cost of file being five hundred dollars.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Proceed with the standby liens. Item number two on a new business, discuss approved paying local attorney retainers for court motions that were filed by Rhodey, uh, Rhodey Law Firm. Uh, the thing is, we're, we're not doing business with Rhodey anymore. I guess everybody probably something like that. And, uh, we found, uh, Lord, Ed found a lawyer and Alan Gordo, that, and he works Alan Gordo and Rhodey also. That works at a much more reasonable rate than Rhodey and we're only going to use him absolutely as necessary. There was some business that Rhodey had that needed closed out and it's just some, I think, court filings and not.
Yeah, I've got, I was gonna talk about it.
Okay.
Um, local attorney's name is Matt, Matthew Wade. Uh, he worked in the, in the court system here for five years. The judge is gonna, he knows him. He, uh. He's, he's ten or fifteen years experience here in the, in the area. So, uh. For what we need, uh, he's, I'm talking about it and he's always willing to look at what we, what we're asking him. Or what we need and if he can't handle it, he will help, uh, recruit somebody who can. So, uh, he's already working on the petition for District Twelve to get our fifth sequel. And during the course of his prepping for that, he found out that our oath of office was invalid. So that's why we were doing the oath of office here the other day with the mayor and whatnot. So that's, that's what he's there meaning. He seems to know what he's doing and is doing a good job of it. And I talked to him about this thing with the court case. It was something involving Beagles. Uh, we were involved initially. Uh, we got, I think there was some property sold that we, we got paid for. And other than that, we have nothing to do with it, but we're still involved with the case and Rhodey is. Building us, I don't know how many thousands of dollars to file to have this renewed. We got to a certain point stopped. That's where we stand now. But, uh, Mr. Wade looked at it and said, yeah, I can, I can go to court and have you guys remove from that. What he's asking for is a three thousand dollar retainer to be taken on as our general counsel. That three thousand dollars will go into a trust fund and when something like this comes up, he'll just take care of it and deduct his fee from that trust fund. If the fund gets below a certain amount, the citizen invoice and say, we need to bring it back up to three thousand, which I think is great because we talked about it before. Uh, this thing with the legal fees just got out of hand. That was, that was obscene what happened with that. This way, that's not gonna happen.
And we pay as we go.
Pay as we go and we have a, we have a cap on it. Uh, it'll never go over three thousand dollars, but it's three thousand that's already in this trust fund. So.
Two or three calls to the other law firm, we're at three thousand.
Yeah.
What is the crazy charge?
Excuse me?
Crazy charge per hour?
Eight charges, uh, about two ninety an hour. Rhodey charged three hundred, but then they also had some stipulations like if this happens, that happens, this happens, the fee goes up to four fifty, seven fifty, whatever it pays me. Uh, Mr. Wade's been upfront and straightforward with me. Uh, I, I had lunch with him the other day. And if that had been, Rhodey made it, I'd have been paying, you know, ten bucks for the whole lot. You know, he can charge the same thing. So he's not, he's not in it to bill this for all he can bill this for, but yeah, he does understand that a lot of things we need an attorney for. Like, uh, like PRC complaints.
Um, did we ever get negotiations with the union?
Uh, we, you, you put a call in to the union.
I have not heard back yet today, but.
We're, we're working on it. We're, we're trying to get started on it.
It's quite a few people that have to meet, so.
And Jessica, our new union's, so it will help.
I hope it does.
I just have a question. Is there one particular person instead of multiple?
No, they do.
They, they got upset and they quit negotiating with us because we had already turned down the budget to the state. It was approved and accepted by the state.
Moving forward, uh.
Because years before they had, we had let them write for a budget.
Chairman, we're the only one authorized.
Actually, none of that's true.
Yeah, that's actually.
None of it's true.
The whole board has to approve any. Manager. That's right. That's what we're doing here right now.
Yes.
So any expenditures, any retainers, any business that will come before the public and the board, we'll have to approve those. Just like today, we're asking for a three thousand dollar retainer. Uh, to put in a trust fund so he can draw out of that, take care of some business, which it looks like he's going to be extremely inexpensive by comparison. So, all that being said, yes?
Um, to go back one. What is the lien that can be put on somebody's property?
Can we finish this in person before we go back?
We can do that in open discussion.
So I would, I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve paying the Matthew Wade doing business with the, uh, Truitt Law Firm. And we also, uh, pay the three thousand dollar retainer for court motions that were filed by Rhodey Law Firm. Therefore, to, uh, bring him on as our general counsel.
And ongoing business?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Second. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to cut, we're going to welcome the check of three thousand dollars for our trust account.
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Okay, we have public questions and answers.
I mean, what is the lien gonna do to somebody?
It puts pressure on the, uh, homeowner and the property owner. It puts pressure on them saying that we have the ability to take legal action against that property if they don't bring up. Their, uh, standby or whatever up to date. And what it does, it just, just gives us a little bit of leverage to try to get them to pay any past these ten months.
It also can't.
Excuse me? That they were what?
And the title, it can't be sold without.
Yeah, and she, she just, all this will be in public record when we file a lien. So if they try to sell the property, it pops up on public records. And that lien has to be closed out for the title, uh, the title to be cleared on the property in case that it was being sold.
As before, it didn't pop up, right?
Well, if we don't file a lien, it'll never pop up. Uh, the, the lien is kind of our protection to get paid if the property is, uh, sold.
Oh, I'm sorry. Say that again?
The lien is our protection to get paid in case a property is being sold and it goes through title. So automatically be picked up when you pay it at the closing of the property. It's also the, uh, the last step before foreclosure. You can foreclose, you can foreclose on the same day you file the lien in this thing. So, uh, so if we need to go to foreclosure on any properties, uh, you have to have a lien on it first. I don't know why he likes foreclosures. And Jesse was telling us that we don't need a lawyer for a foreclosure. No, no, we need a lawyer, but, but we're not. Once the lawyer files for the foreclosure, it's in the court system and the court's handling everything. And, uh.
Find a special master and let's come with the.
Yeah, and we don't get the property. Uh, that's the last thing we get. We don't get the property. Goes to public, office and, yeah, we got the state of Mexico. Like, uh, Ed said, special master. But if it does go in itself, then we get our. Hopefully, our money back on it. After, after the attorney, attorney fees and the court fees and, uh, whatever other fees are, are taken out of it then, if there's nothing left over, we get what's owed us. The easiest way is hopefully somebody sees this lien recording and pays us and clears the lien. That's what we hope.
I have a couple more things whenever. Just a couple of things. Ray Ramos has been our level four water operator for a while. He sent a letter resigning. Uh, and, but he's, they're doing, he's, uh, last week, he signed a contract with another level four operator, uh, out of Valcros. And. His name's Aaron Foster. You'll see him around eventually. Uh, he seems like he's gonna be good for us.
Very continuing to give.
Yeah. Uh. The only other thing. I didn't, I didn't want to. Step on your toes when you did the treasurer's report, but, uh, I've been paying bills. And. One of the big ones are, are property insurance is thirty four hundred dollar, thirty four hundred and eight dollars, maybe six cents every month. Uh, they've almost canceled our insurance a couple of times because these things were getting lost in, in the emails and we weren't getting our, our premium notices. I've got that sorted out now. There's that one. There's also one from Progressive for, for all of our vehicles. And that one is for nine hundred and two dollars a month, I think. So I've got to send those two payments every month on the fifteenth by writing a check. Uh, so that may, may way to make sure they get it by the first. They've been, they've been good so far about. Uh, letting it slide up until the very last minute. And I had to pay it over the phone a couple of times, but I think we're, we're good there now. But we've been paying. We've been paying for some other big ticket items. Uh, Jessica's new billing software. Uh, we paid in full. It was eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars. That, three thousand of that included, included the, uh, what's the term? Transfer or?
Our, our.
Archives.
A complete system transfer. We don't have to do anything.
Yeah, they, they take everything and put it over in the new system. And. There's a lot about this system that I don't understand at all. Jessica does. I think Jesse understands it, but. Sounds like I'll do everything but make the coffee in the morning.
Our IT understands him, but they can't understand him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. We had a whole lot of invoices that we didn't know about that I'm getting caught up on.
Dumpster running away.
Yeah, I just sent a check to Southwest Disposal for ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty seven dollars, ninety one cents. I also changed the pickup rate from three a week to two a week. Now that we don't have the tourist. But. By.
I said, that's good.
Oh, we changed the presidency for winter time because we don't have so many first up.
Uh, I also paid off the Terro County Electric for six thousand, five hundred and four dollars. Uh. Brandon Mountain, we hadn't gotten an invoice from them in a while that, that we knew of, but I paid them seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty one dollars. Uh, and I did pay the, the credit card down. It was almost max out and they, Jesse Duckett and I paid it down almost zero. But then, uh, Leo Mcatee from our, our field group, uh, sat down and, and we went through some of the purchase orders that they desperately needed. Like a PRV, uh, some six inch pipe from fittings and all sorts of other stuff. So we kind of ran the credit card back up, but. But, uh, I paid more of that down. They had, they had a balance of about two thousand dollars, but then I also had to put on. A payment to the insurance company and a payment for office supplies. So the balance on that is up close to three thousand, a little under three thousand dollars now. So we, we still have seven thousand, a little more to on the credit card available to us for credit. But everything else, I think, is, is paid up to date except for New Gen. I got an email from them today. Uh, and they were kind of miffed because they've been trying to contact us, nobody's reaching out back to them. I didn't even think about it. I don't think anybody did. Uh, so I placed a call to them and they didn't call back. So I'm, I'm gonna talk to them like I talked to Rhodey Law Firm, explain our situation, see, you know, if we can, if we work out anything. I'm confident we can. It's not, we don't owe them nearly what we owe Rhodey, so I think we'll be okay. Other than that, there's still money in the general operating account that may pay a little plus on, so.
What do you think the outstanding checks, uh, what would the operating fund be at right now? Cause you've been keeping notes.
Yeah, it was. It's, uh. Good, here's one. Well, I'll just tell you for memory, it's about twenty thousand dollars is in the general. I, I did go through, I checked the, the, uh, accounts online and saw which checks cleared, which hadn't. And based on that, unless there's some checks out there that I don't know about, uh, that I think it's a pretty accurate balance is what we have in the checking account right now. About twenty thousand. But, uh, I didn't check the accounts today. I guess you did. You, you scheduled from that AC hammer, whatever, most checks come in all the time.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not building too fast.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we can't afford to pay many more people until we see some money.
I agree. But Jessica's working on a deposit also, so there's no more, there's no more bills to be paid right now that have to be paid. And my suggestion is we hold off on paying any other invoices for a while for time until we see how those accounts build back up.
Okay, just, just to inform everybody, I think I'm right, writing this. Uh, the, the, the reason why Ed's doing a lot of this stuff, besides he has more time than I do right now, is, uh. Uh, there's only two board members right, right now that are, are able to sign a check.
Correct.
And that'd be these two right here who write me. So that's, uh, and the credit card, I'm not sure about. But, uh, you know. But we're, we're getting everything, you know, the, the finances are still a mess. That's, that's why Ed was reading from the, uh, actual, uh. Uh, data from First National, like you, you know, go online and get to see how much physical money we have in there. We have an uphill battle till the first of next year. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just, um, would, would it be easier especially since you brought up, there's also people to basically sign the checks, wouldn't it be easier to like? Have automatic deductions for the trash cans, for progressive, for the, all these things that are naturally gonna be charged every single month?
On a commercial account, they don't offer auto deduct on commercial account.
I'm sorry?
They will not do an auto deduct on a commercial account. The dumpster, they will not bill us automatically and get paid. And that would be inconvenient for us because we've got to know the funds are available.
Okay, are, are you talking, I'm sorry. Are you talking about, um, is, is it just on, on all aspects or is it just in particular the trash?
Nearly every one of our commercial vendors, we have to pay on invoice. They don't, they don't, because they vary all the time. Amounts vary. It's not like your telephone bill where you can call and say, hey, do a, do a, pay an account deduct on it. Commercial accounts are not. Not available. And it's better for us because we can monitor how much money we have and who we can pay at a time.
I have an issue that I keep on going to the front desk and I'm getting absolutely nowhere. When I told them that I was charged seven hundred dollars and some odd cents, that they put it on my credit card. And I asked them what's it for? They will not give me an answer. And then what company says, I need to see your bank statement?
I didn't need to see the bank statement. I need the clearance.
You asked me my bank statement.
I said, I need the cleared payment from the bank. There's a picture. I need that. And you brought me your credit card statement. And I can't touch your credit card. I can't call your credit card company.
And then, just the other day, I got a receipt for January. Saying. I'm not understanding what's going on and you keep on charging me. And I can't get you to go in and look at it.
Public forum is not a good time for this. We need to work up one on one with the office.
Well, I've tried.
Well, then.
That's why I came to you. You can't get any answers from her.
We'll have to take care of this at the office, well.
Well, and also, when can I get a paycheck? You're saying that Ed and Alan are doing a paycheck?
No.
It's been since July.
The last time I talked to you about that, I said, I needed an invoice for you to, to be able to get a paycheck. And you told me that your hours are in a book and I said, I can't attach a book to, to a pay stub.
Well, um, Renee took all the money. Well, um, Renee took all the money and wrote it in the book, I collected two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I need half of that.
Did you get a receipt for your two hundred and seventy-five dollars?
No. I mean, she wrote it in the book as my receipt.
Where's your book at?
At my house.
And she had written it in there by hand, has she received that?
Did she receive?
That Renee received that money, did she sign for it?
Yes.
They put that into us.
Okay.
We need to see that. Okay, if there's no further questions.
Well, I have one about, uh, the empty spot, I know you're advertising for, you know.
No, that doesn't have anything to do with the board. The board is in the twelfth district court right now, it's going before the court, and we've hired a lawyer to bring it before the court, and they are working on that. The wheels turn pretty slowly. We'll get somebody seen as, as soon as we get a, a court approval by the judge, that's what we're waiting on. The judge will appoint the person to sit in the fifth seat.
The judge of the twelfth circuit?
Yes, that's correct.
That's established in law, we have nothing we can do about it.
We submitted everything, we hired a lawyer, we submitted everything, it's in the court system right now. And we hope they move quickly, we hope it's a matter of urgency that we.
Oh, well, I don't wanna think, I don't wanna think you're gonna, I don't know. That, uh, car that's sitting on Sacramento, that truck that's been there forever, that's, um.
Abandoned.
Yeah, it seems like it's abandoned.
You know, I think it's in front of Michael Williams' property, and I think that truck might be owned by Michael Guiles.
And you can't really.
And it was on your property.
Took it off my property and put it out on the street, and I called on it, you cannot, it's not blocking traffic again, I think that.
That's County Road there, not anywhere near.
You own all the streets, do we?
Excuse me?
We don't own, we don't own property all the way.
No, that's county, that's county property.
That's county graphic.
That's County Road.
It only goes asphalt.
That road and the Eastman on the side of that road belongs to the county. So the town can't do anything about it, you, all you can do is call the county, ask for it to be removed.
They said it's not blocking traffic, we can't do anything about it. Wait till somebody comes around the corner and has an accident there.
Yeah, it's not reasonable.
That doesn't sound reasonable because we could have dead cars all up and down every road.
Yeah, I mean, and it would make everything look so junky.
What I would do is call, uh, code enforcement. This is another county to office, so I want to talk to you about code enforcement. We have a lot of junk cars on Sacramento.
Yeah, they did, and on, well, they tried to pass the process.
Just don't play zone.
The code enforcement was to ask property owners, it's incredible. They wouldn't go after the car owner.
Nope, that's, that's, it does do something.
It was, uh, uh, about several years ago when I was running the grader for the district. Uh, we tried to get the county to get a pickup truck off, off the road, very, very end of Trinidad, in the Colmenac. Finally, they just told me to take the grader and push it off the side.
You can do that with this one.
Well, the codes have changed probably since then, so.
Well, maybe somebody that knows these people can personally talk to them and say, see. And I don't know, if, if, um, Mikey Williams' company, Michaela, if that's right, I think so.
I just have a question, I know we're.
You have to speak up a little bit, you got a tiny voice. Part of you.
I have a question, I know we're pressed for finances and, and obviously maybe time as well, but, um, I had written several. Some time ago about my road, and I just wanted to address it again, cause it's really bad. I went on it today.
What, wait.
I'm not trying to be a stinker.
You're talking about road mate?
But it's real bad, I, I live on Pleasant Valley.
You're pleasant.
Going up to the bar.
Yeah.
It's so bad. I can only drive my truck, I can't drive my car.
Yeah, that's County, is it not?
It's real bad.
No, let me tell you some of the history on that, back multiple boards ago, I don't even remember.
Was it leftover, uh, asphalt?
No, it, it was a county road.
He's got so massive.
It was, they traded it to the county to make White Marsh County Road, and TWSD took over Pleasant Valley. The dumbest thing I've ever heard, because they have no way, no capability to maintain asphalt. And, but they traded with the county. And that was when I, Wapp was still as manager, so it's been quite a few.
So the TWSD traded the property?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, it was issued by us. And the only way to fix it is to take a, take a bucket on a backhoe and rip that asphalt up.
Well, we have a ripper on the, on the new grader, we have a ripper.
I don't think you'd even know, I think you can peel it up, cause it's, it's actually not asphalt, it's chip seal on top. I think a bucket on the front of a backhoe will just peel it right up, it's gonna be good.
Well, you don't get to have to rip, rip it all, uh, actually, the grader, grader would do it really quick.
That's true too, that's.
This is a.
It's a little tight turning, but, yeah.
He's having a hard day of hard.
You still have to pick it up, but.
But, but there hardly any paper to drive on left.
No.
You, you know, it's sort of like one of those games where you go around the puddles.
Four or five years ago, Paul and I filled those puddles with material we could find off the side of the road. Lasted for like four months, but cars just speeded out, because there's so much differentiation in the density of the material.
Our new GM has a huge plate pool of asphalt that he's going to have to take care of. And hopefully whoever walks in will be bright eyed and ready for a challenge. That's the kind of person we're looking for, can do, let's get it done, kind of, GM, that's what we need.
Okay, so we'll just wait on the general manager to maybe address it?
I think that would be the best thing at this time, right? We're, we're, we're just, we're keeping the boat flowing, but very.
Sure.
I think a good GM's gonna make all the difference in the world, as far as focus, getting things done.
But we don't have any money to get anything done.
Excuse me?
We don't have any money to get anything.
Well, a lot of this is just good, a lot of this is good organization. We have stuff to work with, we just need to have it organized, a pathway forward to get it done.
Figure out what's going on.
You gotta put priorities, and a good GM can give us priorities, he can get us real fast where it goes, once he knows what's going on.
So it's a he?
Well, it could be a she, we, we've had both, we've had both. I, I don't know if we need to use wolf terminology here, they, them, who, whatever.
So if y'all go ahead and get that, um. That product that you, uh, will detect the water leaks?
Nope, we have not. Unfortunately, we don't.
Still back with the set script thing?
Oh, they're similar, the, the wolf we have is very similar to the wolf we're gonna get. I mean, just had a few additions to it, right? It wasn't, wasn't totally different type of industry.
It was, it was.
Yes, did it?
Upgrade version.
I, I actually heard that there was parts like lost that go on the one we had.
I think it's in needs repair, yes.
Something, yeah.
But it's a tool, so if we get back on feet, it's a tool.
Yeah, definitely.
We did come in the case and there were loose parts, but, but I, I haven't seen it, you know, I know, I know what it's supposed to look like, but. But I haven't seen what shape it's in, there's also an older one down there, a plant or the shop somewhere. That hopefully they weren't confusing that with the one we're supposed to be using, cause it's only about twenty-five and thirty years old.
I don't know for sure. Last person that I knew of that actually attempted to use it, I believe. I actually remember hearing this, it was with, per, personal incident, it was art, twelve years ago.
Oh, I, I've used it in the, and I was on Pawnee, and I could probably hear dogs bark at your house, however, I couldn't hear a water leak, but. And it was one. Anyway, we can't afford, I don't know if anybody disagrees, but we can't afford it right now.
I would say that's probably true.
We're just gonna try to get, get through this situation we're in now. Robin and Peter pay Paul. Hopefully we'll get, we'll get paid next year. Yes, sir.
How much do you owe New Jim? I, I think we owe them five thousand dollars. I'm not sure, we had an invoice for eleven thousand. And they said we committed a typo or something, I don't know, I, I put a call into him today to talk to him about it, they didn't call me back. So if it's five thousand, that'll be great, we can pay them off very quick and be done.
Is that paid in the month?
I don't, I hope so, I don't know. It was, uh, Mark Hardy, he was the only one talking to me. And so, all these emails were addressed to him, I don't know, uh, why, they have, why we cut off communication with him. So I'm trying to reestablish that and, and find out exactly, uh, how much we owe them.
We also had three complaints for the. On our water system, which our new level four said he would have resolved this week. So he's already, he's already doing it, what he said he was going to do. So he, he has a very good reputation in Santa Fe, and with all the different commissions we have to deal with, he knows these people on a patient basis. Ed was actually talking to one of the water commissions, and they had high praise for him, that he was a, a top shelf kind of guy, so. We're hoping he's really gonna help us take care of our complaints moving forward and any problems that we might have.
We had, we had two to preserve, and when I talked to this guy in, in Santa Fe, he was telling me, you know, you've got so many days to file on. Or to, to send out a notice mail to every, every property owner and timber owner. And it's expensive, and he said, why don't you just wait because you're getting ready to get a third one, and just put them all three in the same invoice? Well, we got the two, and Aaron looked at it and he just, you know, don't worry about it, he says, I know the person that signed it, I'll call them, I'll find out, you know, what we, what we have to do, and. You know, if we need an extension or whatever, I'll take care of it. The third one, uh, was also from the same department, but a different guy. And I got Leo McPatee on a conference call with him, and it turned out they were both computers. And it was usually my eyes glowed still, and they sat there, the three of us sat at this conference call for about an hour, a little over an hour. And talked about everything, and we got just bored on that one, we don't have to worry about it.
We have some people that, we, we're getting people that can do some good for us. You know, instead of just paying bills, we need some people that can bring the action, action to get even things done.
I, I can add just one more thing, just my own personal observations is, we have some outstanding people working for us, and we don't realize it until you work closely with them. Leo, I didn't know he was the computer guy that he is, he's talking to our IT guy, the IT guy wrote a letter, you know, and they're saying, God, finally somebody can speak on my language. And we're getting stuff done, uh, he, he's also a whiz at all sorts of electronics. Uh, you know, Jessica, she stood up and, and she's running that, that office back there by herself. And Nan's been gracious enough to come in and help her out, but, you know, she's doing things that were just phenomenal, she's taking excellent, uh, notes, uh, record keeping, everything. And so I don't think we have anything to worry about, you know, in time being, as long as she's, she's in Nan or up there. Uh, some of the guys in the field are stepping out, uh, they're just amazing what they're doing, so. Uh, I, I personally am, am, am looking forward to working with them and, and, and when I do anything that I can, I'll do my best to take and carry those guys and, and make them want to stay here.
Well, all we need is the captain at the helm, and hopefully we'll get one soon, on the GM's edition. Okay, if there's no firm of business, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting.
What motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you to everyone for coming, hopefully answered some questions. There's been a lot of letters going on, on social media, a lot of it's frustrating details that have been covered here, but you know how it is. We do not.
Well, if it hasn't been captured, then we should.
Uh, issue.
And he says that he's gone wherever it is, he says he's gone there, so he's stopping, and they, they won't.
We have to have a check.
If we have a talking to check. Aren't we have a physical check?
I have to go, they made a mess, the doors just attracted, they do that.